We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting, the Committee of the Whole for March the 12th, 2024. The City Council should have the minutes from the Committee of the Whole from February the 20th. Any additions, corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes have been approved. We've got a little new button technology here that the city manager will explain to us here in just a second. So, questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager, other than how to use the microphone? Any other questions? Ms. Crouch, would you give us? Would you give us a friendly reminder of how we're supposed to respond tonight?
It's me, too. Right now, we're trying a push-to-talk situation up here. And so, for the citizens that come to the microphone, theirs will be on when we get Citizens Communications. But for both, Greg, for the staff as well, everybody is pushed to talk tonight. We're piloting this. It may not go well, and we may flip back to the other way. So, that includes me, too. I may forget. But everybody, a green light turns on, but you have to hold the button down as long as you're talking.
Ms. City Manager, anything for us other than that?
No, sir.
Okay. For the City Council, I asked for y'all's approval and blessing on this last year. I'm on the Board of the Alabama League of Municipalities, and we have a statewide meeting/convention the second week in May of each year. And we need, I need your blessing to go up there and cast votes on behalf of the city. Last year, the vote was basically who was going to be the next chairman of the Board and who was going to be the next vice chairman of the Board were the only two things that we voted on. But there is a form that the city manager has that we do need to fill out and turn in that says that the City Council has approved me representing the community in the city at this meeting. Last year, we did that during the Committee of the Whole with a head nod and a smile, and there was no formal vote. So, if that's okay with everybody, we'll proceed with that. So, is everybody okay with me representing the city? Again, if the Alabama League of Municipalities, to the left side, okay?
Yes.
To the right side, there's a yes? Okay. All right, good. I think that's the majority, Ms. City Manager. Okay. All right. Is there a move to adjourn?
Semmed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call it order tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for March the 12th, 2024. Certainly welcome everybody that has joined us here live tonight, and welcome those who are listening on WA&amp;I, as well as watching through our streaming services on Facebook and YouTube. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Adams.
Here.
O'Blunt.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Mormon.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Taylor.
Witten.
Here.
Here. Which please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. This is the first meeting of the month, so we'll begin by recognizing our Employee of the Month and other employees with their service awards.
We're proud today to introduce you to our March Employee of the Month, and I have a memorandum here from John Langford, Fire Chief for the City of Auburn. I recommend Josh Evans for Employee of the Month. Since Josh was hired in October of 2020, he has excelled in all areas of his position. Josh graduated at the top of his recruit school in the spring of 2021 and achieved the highest overall EMT grade in the program's history. Josh is a mentor and a leader on and off the fire ground. He spends time training and teaching new firefighters while always completing his assigned duties. Josh always looks for ways to improve processes and consistently exceeds expectations. He looks for ways to further his knowledge and skill set every shift. Josh recently took it upon himself to create and design a new interactive computer system training aid that allows personnel to further, to further their understanding of the city streets. His program design has greatly increased the efficiency of our streets and numbers training. It has also led to faster response times when called to service, ultimately improving customer service, satisfaction, and quality of life for Auburn's residents. Josh has dedicated himself to the City of Auburn and the Fire Department. He has achieved several certifications, including Apparatus Operator Aerial and Pumper, Fire Instructor, Fire Officer, Hazardous Materials Awareness and Operations, and Technician, Rapid Intervention Crew, and Rope Rescue Technician. Josh regularly sacrifices personal time in the pursuit of excellence and has a genuine concern for the safety and well-being of others. Josh places the needs of the Fire Department, coworkers, and citizens above his personal gain. These values were fully displayed when Evans witnessed a serious motor accident while off duty and provided a rapid assessment that resulted in quick care for a critical patient. It is for these reasons and many others that I recommend Josh Evans for the Employee of the Month. Congratulations and thank you.
Sir.
thank all those smiling faces you saw with our service awards and appreciate their continued great work on behalf of our citizens every day here in our community, and all the best to Riley and Mike as they enter into retirement, and thank you for their service to Auburn. During the Committee of the Whole tonight, there was no business for the council to take up. I did ask for the permission and the ability to cast a vote on behalf of the City Council at the Alabama League of Municipalities, which I serve on the Board at their annual convention, which is the second week in May in Huntsville of this year. Under Mayor's announcements, I do have a number of things I'd like to quickly go through and thank different departments and just make sure that our community recognizes these events are coming up. We've got Hazardous Waste Collection Day coming up on March the 23rd, and if you'd like to take a peek at our new headquarters for Public Works and Environmental Services, it'll be there. Where hazardous waste collection day will take place this year, on March the 23rd. Trash amnesty is going on right now for spring cleaning in your house until March the 29th, and if you have any questions on either one of the last two items I've talked about, there's plenty of information on our city's website, and we appreciate all the hard work that goes into making both of these happen. Bark in the Park is March the 16th out at Kiesel Park, and is always a lot of fun, as we recognize and have a good time with our pets. Couple of Easter events. Breakfast with the Bunny is on March the 23rd, and the Easter Egg Hunt is on March the 30th. I just want to say a couple of things. For our city, there was some PR out recently about a new effort that the City of Auburn is undertaking with workforce and our veterans, particularly veterans that are coming, they're retiring over in Fort Moore, over in Columbus, and I just want to thank our Economic Development Department and our workforce leadership for taking on that challenge, and we certainly hope things go well. And I believe Auburn and the City of Auburn and workforce and veterans go hand in hand, and all the best. I appreciate the extra effort for that. This morning, some, many of us up here went to the new Coca-Cola Distribution Center and Bottling Plant groundbreaking, and what an encouraging morning to see the leadership from Coca-Cola United here in Auburn, and very proud and excited to open up and build this new facility in our community and for the great jobs it will have. This is another great example of the state and the city coming together and partnering to making something positive happen for the state of Alabama citizens and Auburn citizens. And then there was also an announcement recently with the Milken Institute has recognized our city for being a well-run community, the 14th-best small city as far as being well-run. And there's a number of other parameters that go with that, but that goes back to outstanding departments, outstanding employees who are taking care of the business of the city and making sure that the tax dollars that we're given by our citizens are spent well on behalf of all of our citizens. And then finally, I just, I had a very special opportunity during spring break to share lunch with the Air Force Academy baseball team as they came to Auburn to try to play two games. They got one in, but to be with those young men for a couple of hours was very exciting. Three of those young men actually grew up here in our community and played at Auburn High School, and now they are playing for Air Force, and what a fine group. And the things that they do as student athletes at an academy is really special, and to be honored and recognized. And the next day, they played Auburn in a very competitive game, and our, all of our local guys did some special things. One got a hit, one got a home run, and one pitched a couple of innings, but it was just a, it was a very great time. And I appreciate Auburn's baseball program bringing the Air Force Academy here to play those couple of games. It was a great experience for everyone involved. Does anyone on the council have another, any other announcements they'd like to make tonight?
Please.
Yes, sir.
I just have one, so I can learn how to use this microphone, Mr. Mayor. As Josh Evans was getting his Employee of the Month award, I was reflecting on that new tower that we're steadily erecting out at the new Public Safety Training Center. It's, it looks to be about four stories high, but it looks very high to me, and I just think how brave these people are that train on that facility, and I thank them for their dedication and their bravery and for protecting us. And I just wanted to point that out. If you hadn't been by there, there's quite a bit of construction underway on this, and you'd be surprised at how large this is on just a few acres. So, my hat's off to, to the people that are overseeing that, and thank you again to the men and women that serve us every day.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may. I wanted to highlight a couple of locals' achievements this week. Firstly, the, our local firefighter, Dakota Talmage, who was recently featured on The Voice, who knew that that young man had such a pair, set of pipes. He was picked, and he was moving on in that competition. I also wanted to recognize a couple of, three high school students, three, two high school students and one junior high student that recently competed in the Greater East Alabama Region Science and Engineering Fair in Auburn, in Auburn University, Montgomery. They, the three of them won their division outright and were immediately, became finalists in the International Science Fair in Los Angeles in May. And I'd just like to read the names out. Let me see. We've got Kevin Yan, Auburn Junior High, Annie Bow, and Auburn High Schooler, Jack Parsons, my, my second-oldest son. So, I wanted to recognize all of those and certainly give my thanks to our school system, all of the teachers who foster a love of learning here in this town. I couldn't be more thankful to live here and enjoy that wonderful resource. So, thanks a lot.
Anyone else? Congratulations, Dad.
Thank you.
I know you'll take some of the credit. Okay. Anyone else? All right. At this time, we'll have Auburn University communications.
Good afternoon, y'all. After a well-deserved break following a busy week of midterms, the Auburn student body is starting to get back into the flow of classes again, and there are a handful of important events that are coming up that the students are gearing up for. Tomorrow, Zeta Tau Alpha is hosting the 28th Annual Big Man on Campus. This event is an all-male beauty pageant where local celebrities judge contestants based on personality, originality, and Auburn spirit. Over the past decade, the pageant has raised over $800,000 in support of breast cancer education and awareness, and the hope is to raise another $100,000 tomorrow night. Next Saturday, over 1,000 Auburn students will serve the Auburn and Opelika communities in the big event. The big event is a one-day, student-led service project sponsored by the university's Office of Student Involvement. Since its beginning in 2003, the program has served as an opportunity for Auburn students to give back to the Auburn and Opelika communities by performing basic community service tasks for households, businesses, churches, and organizations as a way of saying thank you for Auburn, for being a great community to live in. The McCrery Institute for Cyber and Critical Infrastructure Security announced the rollout of a new podcast that I thought was really interesting. They've already featured some prominent guests such as Melissa Hathaway, who is the former cybersecurity advisor to Presidents Bush and Obama, as well as a handful of other guests, including cybersecurity journalists from CNN and Politico. This is part of the institute's new strategic plan to make the research institute a destination for all things related to cybersecurity. I thought that was something that was really interesting to highlight, but that's all for me this week. War Eagle.
At this time, is Citizens Communications on tonight's agenda? We do not have any public hearings tonight, so if there's anything on the agenda that you would like to speak to the council about, just items on our agenda now would be the time for you to come forward. And we'd ask that you come forward to the microphone and give us your name and address. You'll have five minutes. Yes, sir?
If I'm out of line, y'all tell me. I think that Tullahoma Drive is, y'all, a legitimate tonight.
It is. It sure is. Yes, sir. This will be an appropriate time.
My name is Tom Connor Brown. My physical address is 1017 Stage Road. I come before y'all tonight because my daughter and my two grandchildren live at 803 Tullahoma Drive, and it's a concern for me. Suggestions maybe to consider would be possibly speed bumps put in on both ends of that big curve. And of course, non, y'all, look, I guess considering non-parking on one side, which is great. The other thing that someone needs to go look at is 803 Tullah, um, excuse me, 804 Tullahoma. We have college students living in that house, and I guarantee you, there's at least five of them in there, and that's a problem with that curve. They all park on the street. And if y'all will consider those items, I would appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. City Manager's Communications.
Mayor, we have no City Manager's Communications this evening, so if you're ready for the consent agenda, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Semmed.
Second. Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There was no abstention, there were no abstentions with the consent agenda?
Okay.
I wanted to clarify, there were no abstentions on the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a, I apologize. I meant to abstain on the cam real estate. I should have pulled that off, so I apologize. If I need to do that, I'm happy to pull that off and abstain from that.
Yeah, choice. Do you guys want to go back, or if you just want to abstain on the whole consent agenda, that's fine as well.
My apologies.
Why don't you just abstain on the whole consent agenda?
That'd be fine. Thank you. Sorry about that.
All right. All right.
All right. Under ordinances this evening, item 9A establishes a no parking zone along Tullahoma Drive, unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Have a motion of seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing and hearing none, any discussion or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I've received multiple communications about this in support of this ordinance, and I am very thankful to the citizens that brought this to the city's attention, because you're absolutely correct. It's a situation that needed correcting. So, I fully support this and hope everybody else on the council will as well.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I think there was some research done by the city on this. Could you share any details on that?
There's some research. I will have the city engineer, Fraser, and our Public Safety Director, Matthews, speak to. This involved a collaboration between engineering services and public safety. When we get complaints about vehicles on both sides of the road, this, the root of this was about a school bus getting through, but it was a lot more than a school bus. It involved some fire vehicles and other things that we went out. We actually spent a good bit of time on these things to make sure we're keeping everybody safe. So, either one of you, take it from here.
Sure. Thank you. Once we received the concern from the community, we sent the Fire Chief, one of his delegates, out to measure the, the street and the curve, and if vehicles were parked on the curve, could we have one of our large fire apparatus vehicles make it through there, which that would have been problematic. And so, we communicated that to engineering services to consider during their decision as well.
Anyone else have a question?
I have a question. Will you speak to how this will be enforced moving forward?
Public Safety Director Matthews will take this one as well.
Sure. So, we specifically respond to complaints, you know, from the citizens. If they see someone that's parked on a yellow curb or an area that's marked "No Parking" by signage, we'll respond with an enforcement officer out to that area. But additionally, if an enforcement officer is patrolling the area and happens to see it and it's problematic, then they would proactively stop and handle the situation, whether it's contacting the registered owner and asking them to move it or sighting that, that vehicle. If it is a, a blockage where a vehicle couldn't get through there, then we could tow it if it's a public safety hazard.
Anyone else? Okay. Lindsay, with the roll call.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
O'Blunt.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A concurs with the actions of the Industrial Development Board to purchase approximately 211.45 acres of property located on Webster Road adjacent to the Board's existing industrial park in the amount of $4,651,900.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion of second. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes amending the State Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Grant, to reallocate $139,470.57 in funding from Utility Assistance, Rental Assistance, and Program Administration to other areas where the funds will be applied locally to says families who could continue to struggle with food insecurity under the food distribution activity. This amendment is being requested since there are no longer valid applications for COVID-19 specific cases of homelessness prevention in the form of rental assistance or utility assistance.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Any comments or questions?
Yeah. Could you give us all and the public an overview of how we got there and the reason why that money's allocated in the way it has?
Absolutely. I'm going to have Al Davis, our Community Services Director, explain. And one of the key differences I just want everybody to keep in mind is we have what we call entitlement funds that come on an annual basis from the federal government based on our population and low moderate income size. So, we get annual funds that can be spent a certain way, and then the state was allocated a lot of extra COVID-related funds, and these are the COVID-related Community Development Block Grant funds. So, they had different hooks mainly related to documentation having to do specifically with COVID-19. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Well, the city also received COVID direct funding through HUD in addition to these funding. So, we had two funding streams where the city actually received dollars, COVID dollars that we could use to support agencies, et cetera, during, during the height of COVID-19. We also received, and applied for, received a $750,000 grant from the state of Alabama, which was also COVID-related. One thing to note about COVID funding is that they're very restrictive. They have to be used to either prepare, respond to, or prevent COVID. They can't be used for any other purpose. So, we did allocate from the state dollars, a significant amount of these funds went to the East Alabama Food Bank. The majority of it, probably about $450,000, was allocated to them to purchase equipment, purchase freezers, all the things they needed to ensure that they were able to provide the food that was needed during the height of COVID. We also funded some other agencies, the Boys and Girls Club, Joyland, Auburn Daycare, the seniors. We was also able to spread that money out and help some of those agencies as well. However, because it's so restrictive, we were not able to use all those dollars for utility and rental assistance. And it is, these, is you either lose it, use it or lose it. So, we were facing a situation if we're not able to spend those funds by the end of September and close out this grant by the end of November, then those dollars would go back to the state. We did indicate in our original application to the state that if we had any additional funds left, that we would allocate those dollars to the East Alabama Food Bank or to the pantry. So, we'd already indicated early on how we'd like to, to utilize any leftover dollars, so any additional dollars. The state was willing to allow us to move those dollars or request, we requested move them, and we're bringing it to you tonight to relocate those, to reallocate those dollars that we were not able to spend, and give those dollars to the East Alabama Food Bank, as well as the pantry at the Borckin Community Center. The pantry at the Borckin Community Center is probably one of the most business pantries in the city. It averages about 135 individuals a month and distribute over 1,400 pounds a month. So, they are certainly in need of some additional funding as well. So, that's what we requested tonight is reallocate those dollars to those eligible activities in very needed areas that could use these dollars, and even more importantly, spend it by the end of September.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
This represents about 10% of the original amount that, that we received, or even less.
Mr. Davis?
You're talking about in terms of what we're asking to reallocate?
No, sir. We, we received COVID dollars to the tune of, I don't remember, a couple of million?
About 1.3, 1.4 million, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so this represents about 10% of that.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Please. Please.
Who's eligible to use the food pantries?
If you, if you meet the income limit, you can, can utilize the food pantry typically low mod.
And the goal at Boykin is because we have a senior center there, we have some subsidized daycares there that, that we're trying to make a one-stop shop also, and we have a large low moderate income population in that neighborhood, but we're trying to also make a one-stop shop for those who are going there for other services to make it as easy as possible to have access to what they need.
Anyone else? Have a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
At this time, we'll open up Citizens Open Forum. This is your opportunity to speak to the council about anything. We'll ask that you come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak to the council. We would ask that all of your comments be directed towards the council.
Martha Champ, 307 Camellia Drive. The core values of Auburn should be wisdom, number one. What is wisdom? The fear of the Lord's the beginning of it, just the beginning. And the clean love for neighbor, not eros, but caritas, filios, brotherly love. And especially, number three, is the extreme protection of children's morals and values, children's purity. Children belong to God first and to their parents second, and no child should be exposed to pornography. Yet this city is buying it for our library. Stop buying it. Stop buying it. Stop signing checks for obscene books. Let the parents instruct their own children in sexual behaviors at an age the parents choose. It's their right. Stop the library from buying sexually explicit material and books that children aged 12 and up may see. These books damage the conscience and are toxic for a lifetime. God calls some of the sex acts in the library books abomination. It's moral degradation that leads to disease and death. Children are little. They look to us to know what's right and true. Take the books out of the library that teach them lies, that tell them you can be both male and female at the same time, then one minute you can be the opposite. These books don't help these children. Children will meet many storms in life. The Lord Jesus Christ will calm their storms, all their storms. He calmed the tempest and the roaring waves on the Sea of Galilee. He loves children. He warns any adult who offends an innocent child that it were better for him than a millstone were tied around his neck and he were cast into the depths of the sea than to do that to a child, to lead him into sin. And the P flag lifestyle, which is sin. Christ loves innocent children. He warns adults to protect it. Thank you.
Who will be next?
Susan Bolt, 1188 East University Drive. Tonight I want to talk about Dixon versus the city of Auburn, specifically two claims and their explanations from the Alabama Supreme Court. The first being a claim by Dixon that the ordinance violates his right to equal protection guarantees under the Alabama Constitution. As quoted from the Alabama Supreme Court decision, as this court has recognized, however, Alabama's Constitution contains no express equal protection provision. Then they went on to write that whether the Alabama Constitution provides for a guarantee of equal protection remains in dispute. Directly following these passages, they note that Dixon has not asserted a federal equal protection claim, appearing to confirm the knowledge that ordinance 3288 does violate the 14th Amendment. Next, Justice Brown, in his response, says, "This court does not recognize a regulatory taking claim based on the Alabama Constitution." He continued when speaking of the Town of Gurley case that, quote, "Alabama's failure to recognize regulatory takings is out of line with the vast majority of the states, which do recognize the concept of a regulatory taking under state constitutions." He continues, "Overruling Town of Gurley would provide Dixon and other landowners of the state the same basic protections under well-settled takings clause provided by other jurisdictions." So twice, the Supreme Court sees an injustice and offers a path to overturn the ordinance. So, does the city of Auburn concentrate on the state constitution, knowing that it puts citizens at a disadvantage that forces them to defend their rights in court at citizens' defense, expense, excuse me? Why did the city manager and her staff present you with an ordinance that is unconstitutional? Should the city manager and her staff be forced to vet all ordinances to assure you, the policymakers, that they are constitutional? Or should the city manager and her staff be fired for presenting an unconstitutional ordinance to you? How comfortable are you now that you know that you were not given complete information when asked to vote on an ordinance that tramples citizens' rights? How well will you sleep tonight, knowing that you were duped and used and that you cannot trust the information being presented to you for a vote? Mr. Dawson, at a previous meeting, you asked about the constitutional use of drones at the police department. Will you now ask the city manager to go on record as to whether ordinance 3288 is constitutional, both state and federally? Your characters and reputations have been used to benefit the city and used to hurt the citizens you swore an oath to protect. As the policymakers, I ask you to rescind the ordinance 3288 and to rescind this unconstitutional attack on the citizens of Auburn.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Hi, folks. Steve Cosgrove, 1927 Watercrest Drive, out at Ashton Park at North Lakes. I just wanted to come and touch base. I hadn't seen you for a while. Just want to reiterate how much I really appreciate y'all. Every time I have the opportunity to see you in person, saw you recently, I've expressed that appreciation and I really mean that. It's amazing, it's amazing the stewardship, I think, that you all display. City manager, or mayor, city council, really, really appreciate it. All we have to do is just look around and, and, and see what's, what, the goodness that it's being cared for and, and created. I sent you a little note about the new donut shop in town. A little town can't have too many good donut shops. Somebody had taken over a local, really neat local restaurant that was open September 4th, 1989, and it's, it's keeping going. We all like that. And the highway paving project out going 147, going out of town, I particularly liked that because when I first moved out, when we first moved out there into Ashton Park from South College, that was July 29th, 2006, I noticed those hash lines coming down there and I, and whenever you see hashed yellow lines and so forth, it gives the green light to, to just highball around traffic and so forth. And when, when there's somebody turning in there like a big box type truck or, or a school bus, it's really hard for people to see coming around there and so forth. Matter of fact, Jeff Ramsey, who your former city engineer, and I went out there a couple of times and took a look at that, he, he agreed with that, that could be a hazard. And, but it was just under the purview and I know of the Alabama Department of Transportation, I think. But they, when they redid it, I was so, I was delighted and because it had to do with safety, keeping things safe. Like when we coach, you want to keep things safe, fun, fast-paced and content strong, but safety is always first. You want to keep it safe. And that just, that just really made, made sense to me. There's a lot of little older folks that are coming in and out and so forth, and particularly if there's any sort, and the lights sometimes, and headlights, if there's any inclement weather, it can, it can be a problem. Here's my trivia question. I got 25 seconds. Here's my trivia question for you. Who was the player, Auburn, local Auburn school that played in the Super Bowl? Not DeMarcus Ware. We coached him. Not DeMarcus Ware. Who, so who's the player? You have 13 seconds to figure it out.
O.C. Umenera.
What's that?
O.C. Umenera.
Who's that?
O.C. Umenera.
Okay, another one then. This one started in the Super Bowl XII, and his name was Bernard Frank Jackson. But anyway, I'll finish that story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Robert Wilkins, 261 Denton Drive, Auburn, Alabama. Good evening, mayor and council. Ethical responsibilities. Three years have passed since the STR 5, Taylor, Dawson, Griswold, Parsons, and Anders pass ordinance 3288, short-term rental. Estimates are that the STR 5 have already stolen over $2 million from Auburn citizens while affecting over 151 families representing over 450 Auburn citizens comprising of nearly 400 rooms. The mayor should have recused himself. Why? Simply put, conflict of interest. Let me explain. First, stated in the Auburn Villager on 4/20/20, the Auburn Planning Commission will consider a conditional use request for a five-story hotel to Auburn, Alabama, downtown. The project called Graduate Auburn with 177 rooms where the Anders bookstore currently resides. Two, the mayor did recuse himself on 5/19/20 at the Auburn City Council meeting for that conditional land use vote, but did not recuse himself from the STR. And quoting the mayor, "This agenda concerns a piece of property that my family owns, so out of an abundance of caution, I'm completely removing myself from the discussion and vote on the item in full transparency." Third, the mayor and the city bureaucrats utilized the lack of data to create friction from the group "Don't Hotel Our Neighborhood" and the STR members while keeping the Auburn City Council uninformed. The mayor, fourth, the mayor set up an impotent STR task force, which had no recommendation. Five, the mayor, the city manager, the council members, Parsons, Griswold, and Dawson met with Vic Patel, multiple hotel owner and president of Auburn Hospitality Group on 3/15/21, a day before the passing of ordinance 3288. Note, the hotel lobby and main objective is to crush Auburn, I mean Airbnb and STR. Six, a day after the meeting with the hoteler, the mayor and the city manager utilized parliamentary procedures on 3/16/21 to squash Mayor Pro Tem's wins 2/16/20 amendment to ordinance 3288. The mayor brought back the original proposed STR ordinance. The mayor worked incredibly hard to make sure that ordinance 3288 was passed via Zoom, while providing no data to support pros or cons of the short-term rental, none. If the mayor had recused himself to avoid a conflict of interest, the ordinance would not have passed. Tell us why, mayor. We can handle the truth.
I am Kathy Donald. I live at 349 Payne Street and have been a resident of Auburn for 42 years. For the last two years, an individual has repeatedly addressed the council on social media their opposition to Auburn's short-term rental ordinance. The comments and posts have included untruthful statements as well as attacks on council members and city staff, using such words as greedy and uninformed. The short-term rental ordinance was developed at the request of numerous residents over a two-and-a-half-year time span and represents the culmination of many hours of work by planning professionals and city leaders when input of hundreds of citizens. The council and the mayor were well-informed, and none of them profited from the order that they ultimately approved. The city council members who voted in favor of this ordinance were overwhelmingly reelected in 2022. Bob Parsons, who represents Ward 6 and served on the task force, received 85% of the vote in his ward. Mr. Griswold and Ms. Taylor were reelected with 61 and 70 respectively percents, allowed information from their constituents. Before this ordinance, permanent residents living in family-oriented, close-in neighborhoods found themselves with a revolving door of celebrity visitors nearby, a result of investors purchasing houses or neighbors using their own houses as homestays and converting them to STRs or house hotels, which are businesses, not neighborhood conservation. In older neighborhoods where lots are smaller and streets are more narrow, such intrusions are more onerous. After all, everyone who comes to Auburn for a short stay is coming to celebrate something, football, basketball, graduation, weddings, rush, reunions, et cetera, and celebrate they do. These neighborhoods have no HOA. The Auburn city zoning is our HOA. We have relied on the city to preserve our neighborhood character. We have relied on the city to make our neighborhood watch programs effective. I know my grandchildren playing in my backyard or on my patio are a mere camellia bush away from my neighbor's patio and are not interacting with temporary visitors that change weekly. Auburn's mayor responded to the distress residents of these neighborhoods expressed when he put a task force in place. The Planning Commission and City Council votes confirmed that they honor neighborhood preservation values and that they were listening to constituents. Thank you. I'm sorry I haven't thought to come more regularly and tell you how much I appreciate what you have done. And by the way, the house hotel across the street from my home was sold after the ordinance was passed and now houses a real family. Thank you for the new neighbors.
Who'll be next?
Good evening. My name's Connor Bailey. I live at 323 Brookside Drive. I've lived in Auburn since 1985. I spent 30 years on the faculty in the College of Agriculture, spent a lot of time in rural Alabama, talking with people who were saying, "Why is not the government protecting me against this landfill, this hog farm that has come next to my home, impeding the enjoyment of my property?" The reason? The absence of zoning. In rural Alabama, there is essentially no zoning, unlike Auburn. Under Alabama state law, municipal governments like Auburn have the right to establish zoning districts to promote the general welfare of the community. And further, these regulations in one district may differ from those in other districts. The legality of Auburn's STR ordinance has been affirmed by the Alabama Supreme Court. Auburn's STR ordinance protects general welfare of residents in NC Zone. STRs undermine property values for residential owners in two ways. First is the topic that has attracted most of the attention, the noise, the traffic, the parking and other nuisance characteristics of STR, of short-term rentals that turn a residential property into weekend-long party houses, impeding enjoyment of neighbors. Less well-recognized is the fact that STRs hollow out neighborhoods when those same properties are left vacant for most of the year. STRs would undermine the unique fabric of neighborhoods as we know them in the NC Zone. STRs have a broad negative impact in the community by attracting investors who look at residential properties in the NC Zone only as a source of profit. These investors may drive up housing costs for younger families with school-aged children who wish to live there, and we just heard the story of a new neighbor that came in to her neighborhood. Auburn has had an NC Zone since before I came to town. I don't know how long it's been here, but it's, it was because of that NC regulation that my wife and I bought property in Auburn, and we have been property owners and paid taxes since 1985. Some individuals believe that their rights as owners of private property are absolute, not true. Property owners have responsibilities, including not adversely affecting the enjoyment of other property owners such as myself, and to protect the property values of those other owners. We are at a moment of serious political polarization in this country where some people claim their rights are absolute and choose to defame anyone who claims otherwise. I am saddened to see this infect political discourse in our community. I commend Mayor Anders, city council, and the city staff for their patience while they heard themselves insulted and derided week after week for the work they did in putting a fair and much-needed ordinance in place. And I was a participant in that process of public hearings and the like, and I appreciate what was done. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Lynda Dean, 474 Scott Street. Immediately after his election in 2018, Mayor Anders set up a short-term rental task force to develop a clear regulatory ordinance. The task force consisted of two Planning Commission members, two city council members, and three citizens. The individual who has regularly addressed city council for two years has incorrectly claimed on social media that the task force had, quote, "had no STR members." Actually, two of the three citizens on the task force were themselves owners of short-term rentals, or had been, and brought that perspective to task force meetings. The task force held two work sessions on May 13th and August 14th, 2019, and two sessions during which citizens could speak on January 17th and May 22nd, 2019. A video of the May 22nd public input meeting is available on the city's website. A clear majority of the speakers supported an ordinance that would prohibit short-term rentals in single-family residential neighborhoods. Speakers at this public hearing, as well as during the Planning Commission hearing, described specific incidents of noise and lewd behavior of short-term rental occupants disturbing the peace of their neighborhoods. The individual has stated on social media that he did not, quote, "have any information supporting that short-term rentals had caused any problems in Auburn." Perhaps this individual would have been better informed if he had listened to citizen comments. The individual has erroneously stated that the task force, quote, "had no recommendations" and did not, quote, "do its due diligence." In fact, representatives of the task force presented recommendations to Forrest Cotton, Jim Buston, the city manager, and Mayor Anders on October 21st, 2019. Planning Commission work sessions took place on December 3rd, 2019, and on January 14th, September 9th, and October 5th, 2020. The planning director researched short-term rental ordinances in other cities to inform the task force and Planning Commission during work sessions. Some of these cities are listed on his slide presentation. Nobody was uninformed in this whole process, as the individual has claimed. The first draft of the ordinance permitted short-term rentals in only eight zones. This is documented in the slides. Eventually, it was expanded to permit short-term rentals in 14 zones, showing tremendous compromise resulting from careful planning discussion. In short, the Planning Commission sought and achieved a balanced solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would be next? Seeing no one, we'll close this time of citizens' communications. Anyone on the council have anything they'd like to say?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Over the past three years, Mr. Wilkins has shared with us an assortment of arguments and statements as his response to the short-term rental ordinance adopted by the previous council on March 16th, 2021. An argument to which he returns on a regular basis is that his constitutional property rights have been stripped from him. Conspicuously missing from all his commentary to date is any mention of zoning where the debate belongs. And I understand why Mr. Wilkins has avoided zoning. It sounds so mundane compared to the constitutional property rights. Presumably, he's steering clear from zoning discussion because he knows that in the face of municipal zoning regulations, the property rights argument loses a little of its luster. Zoning is a set of municipal laws or regulations that govern how property can and cannot be used in specific geographic locations, and it serves in part to keep incompatible or unsuitable uses away from residential property. Mr. Wilkins doesn't complain that he is prevented from opening a fast-food franchise on his neighborhood conservation-zoned property. He makes no objection that our zoning regulations prohibit him from establishing any commercial use, be it a bank or a bookstore. Conversely, he appears, it appears that he's happy with our zoning laws prohibiting a concrete plant or a manufacturing hub or a nightclub or an electrical substation setting up on Denson Drive. The restrictive characteristic of neighborhood conservation zone is what makes it so attractive to many homebuyers, especially those who want to live in a residential setting free from the disruption of commercial activities. Also prohibited in the NC zone is any type of transient accommodation use, to include hotels, motels, condo tells, dormitories, boarding houses, bed and breakfasts, group homes, halfway houses, and short-term rentals. Short-term rentals have never been permitted in neighborhood conservation, yet Mr. Wilkins chose to operate his home as one anyway. He'd have us believe that he's a victim. I'm glad Mayor Anders took the initiative to create a policy for STRs as soon as he became the mayor of the City of Auburn, and I was proud to be a part of the STR task force. The process was an excellent example of transparent, community-driven, thoughtful deliberation with healthy, productive discussions, and plenty of stakeholder input and compromise. All the materials are still available to view on the City of Auburn's website. Mr. Wilkins seems to be operating on the fashionable trend that if you say stuff repeatedly over time, it will become real and true, but it doesn't. Contrary to his claim that no recommendations were delivered to the planning department, myself and two other citizen members provided the then-planning director Forrest Cotton with bullet point recommendations on October 21st, 2019, contrary to Mr. Wilkins' claim that the task force and council were uninformed. I chose a retired city planner and an Auburn resident, Bruno Ulrich, to be a task force member, and together with Mr. Ulrich, I researched and studied numerous municipalities' STR ordinances as well as the City of Auburn's zoning ordinance in its entirety. Mr. Wilkins continues to dismiss the hundreds of hours put into this ordinance, but regardless, the work happened. Contrary to Mr. Wilkins' claim that the task force was made up of people who did not view short-term rentals favorably, we had two citizens on the task force, both of whom had direct experience with short-term rental hosting. The STR model was supported by all participants of the task force, and the resulting policy reflects as much, with short-term rentals being permitted in over a dozen zoning classifications in the city. Legislation that pleases everybody is a rare commodity indeed. The City of Auburn's short-term rental ordinance may not be a perfect document, but it makes every attempt to honor the spirit and the intent of our zoning ordinance taken as a whole, and it attempts to meet the needs of every resident in our community. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons? Anyone else?
I have one additional comment. I wanted to
Please.
speak to Ms. Shamps' continued attempts to publicly disparage the LGBT community, a community made up of our friends, our neighbors, our colleagues, our family members, and our fellow taxpayers. Her words do not reflect the mission or vision of this city's administration. I also want to reach out and assure the library staff that I receive numerous weekly communications from Auburn constituents praising the facility and the employees. And thanks for your kind service to all the members of our community. Thank you.
Anyone else?
5.3 billion. 5.3 billion. That's how much control that AJ Capital has and assets around the world. AJ Capital is the holding company for the Graduate Hotel Group, which is constituted of 37 hotels in the United States and over 100 properties worldwide. The concept and the idea that an organization and a company that is worth $5.3 billion and building a facility in this community that is probably millions and millions and millions of dollars would take the time to speak to an elected official and warn them about their vote in regard to a project going forward is preposterous, stupid, and fantasy. For two years, I've listened to this man talk down about me and indirectly about my family over a make-believe idea that he has convinced himself is true. I made a decision about how I voted on the short-term rental. And it was a challenging time. We were working through virtual means. It was a heated argument. I read a statement the night that we finally voted on this that you can find on the city's website. If there's any criticism for my leadership through that time or the reason I voted for this, it's all there, and it's fair game. But to make up this fantasy that something happened that was immoral and unethical and wrong is frankly disturbing. This gentleman has come here for two years to talk to us, primarily guided by his hatred for me and his distrust for me over what he sees as something that shouldn't have happened that in reality was nothing more than a fantasy. Mr. Wilkins, that's why I will not meet with you, because your obsession with me is frankly disturbing, and you've not earned or deserve an opportunity to sit down with me one-on-one and talk. If you don't like our rules, come every week. You have the right as a citizen to tell us we're wrong, we're incorrect, we're not following protocol, whatever you want to say. But to try to do this based on character is unfortunate, and it's wrong.
Does anyone else have anything? Move to adjourn?
So moved.